Oregon City Commission to order for Tuesday, October 5th?
Third.
Third. To order. So, we're talking about...
Roll call.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Engelberg?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here. So, under general business, we have the city manager recruitment process. Mr. Conkle, do you have a staff report?
Yes, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the HR director and kind of walk through what he's put together to help prepare for this.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Put before you the staff report that was created and a number of attachments for consideration in what and how the city commission would like to recruit the vacant city manager position. Key questions that I have, well, let me first go back to what we did in 2010 as far as process, and I can give you some feedback, both positive and negative, that I received after that recruitment. So, in 2010, we recruited for six weeks. That was mainly because of the holidays. We extended the recruitment. Typically, we recruit for anywhere from two to four weeks at the most, so three would be a median. Again, if we recruit for three weeks, we'd be just prior to the Thanksgiving holiday, so that we could screen applications. So, last time, we recruited for six weeks. The commission asked to screen the applicants themselves. So, the commission, and Commissioner Smith probably remembers this or may not, but they looked at 53 applicants. The applicants were, the applications were blinded. In other words, they were just assigned a number, so you didn't know who the person was, although you could probably figure it out from some of the work details on it and on the individuals. So, and then the commissioners ranked each of those. Typically, what Human Resources does is goes through the recruitment for minimum qualifications and tries to determine the most qualified candidates and would in turn provide those to the hiring manager, in this case, would be the commission. That wasn't the case last time. So, we did 53, and then there was a question on to whether we would have three or five final candidates. The decision was five final candidates. And so, then, we devised a schedule. Most of the candidates were from the Washington or Oregon area, so there was very little travel. You know, some folks did have to travel, but it wasn't very expensive for travel. We had four forums, meet and greet forums, and that was the feedback I got from the candidates was exhausting. They just were formed to death, so to speak. So, we, I think something we learned from that is that we had an early morning meeting, meet and greet, and that one was not well-attended. And so, if nothing else, we do the meet and greet in the afternoon or evening to allow more citizens to come off work and attend. Excuse me. Well, we also had a meet and greet, yeah, we had a breakfast meet and greet, a lunch meet and greet for citizens, and then an after-hours meet and greet. So, three meet and greet for the public, which was a little bit excessive. We had a lunch, a staff lunch meet and greet, and then, on the final night, there was a dinner with the commission at Wetherford's with significant others, partners, et cetera. So, there was a fair amount of funds spent on entertainment of not only the citizens, but the candidates and the commission. One recommendation would be that we can tailor that down a bit. Getting back to the task before us this evening, you know, the question is whether the commission would like me to do the recruitment, which I'm perfectly capable of doing and willing, certainly, or if they're interested in a search firm. Search firms, City of West Lynn has, they haven't recruited yet because they're waiting for their third counselor to, or their newest counselor to be elected, and they're, excuse me, they have bids anywhere from $22,000 to $28,000 for executive search firm for about, I think they have six or seven different search firms that they've talked to.
I've talked to, I've talked to two, no, three now, and they're all right in that $30,000 range.
And that's also plus expenses, so that's the base fee, and then there are typically expenses associated after that, too, right?
The one firm out of Dallas, it was a $30,000 flat fee, and the only additional expenses would be for the travel and lodging of the candidates that we had, if we had to fly somebody in.
Okay. So, that's one of the questions. The other question is, you know, the screening process, if, how the commission would like to do the screening process. Would they prefer the HR do their job and screen for minimum qualifications and provide a list of candidates to the hiring manager for review, or if, do you want to see all the candidates? That's something that you need to look at. The other thing, actually, I recommended last time a subcommittee, that one of the commission. In other words, so, and that one, for whatever reason, didn't get traction. So, that's, and that's, you know, again, one of the things that the commission has to decide, hopefully, tonight. Also, last time, backgrounds, all HR did, which we typically do, was check with references, so I called around to the different cities, but we did not really have a good background check. The commission asked to do the background check themselves, and my recommendation in this case would be to hire through our labor attorney and investigator to do background checks.
Cam?
Most likely.
Yeah.
To do background checks so that we would, you know, have attorney-client privilege and investigator would be able to operate and provide a little bit better background than we may have had last time. So, that's kind of the background. The other thing, I mentioned salary and benefits. You know, the salary range that has to be decided upon also, hopefully, tonight. Typically, there, it's anywhere from 10% to 15% above the highest-paid department head, just because that's, you know, I guess, the standard. And our highest-paid department head currently is the police chief, and the top of that salary range, 15% above that, the top of the chief's salary range, we'd put it at about $166,500.
Oh, sure, I had to make that salary comment about the only guy who carries a gun, right?
So, at this point, we're open for discussion and questions. I did receive one feedback on the proposed timeline that I sent out, if there are other comments or questions about that, or also, the policy, what's it, the thing I sent you, policy guidelines, and that also needs to be, we would need to agree to and have that voted on at an open meeting, which was effectively the job description of a city manager. So, if there are additions or changes to that, those can be emailed to me, or we can talk about it tonight.
One comment that I've received was from the chamber and how they, during that 2010 review process, how they appreciated being a part of the process, having that opportunity to meet when we went through that process. So, that was, they felt that was a good way to get to meet in the potential candidates.
One other thing, last time, the department heads did not interview per se. It was a conversation with the candidates. So, there was, they were not given any questions. It was just an open dialogue, and that was what the direction we received. So, we wanted to interview, and last time was like the chief of police and, I think, two other folks.
Library and parts of record.
Okay, yeah, so...
But they did provide a ranking.
They did provide a ranking, that's correct. They provided, yes, a ranking. Okay. Questions?
Why don't we start with the standards and get that out of the way? Because no matter what we do...
And then maybe move on to the key questions to consider?
Yes.
Go through those?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
So, has everybody had a chance to look at the standards?
You mean the manager profile?
No, I mean the draft standards, criteria, and policy directives.
Yeah, I was okay with them. Looking documents.
I did print that one out, yeah.
So, I didn't see anything that jumped out at me as being a problem. Is there something that's missing?
The only thing that comes to mind is something that's come up in the past from citizens, and that's about the city manager residing in the city, and I understand that that requires a change in our charter...
Specifically says in the charter that the city manager is not required to live inside the city limits. That would require a charter amendment.
Right, I just wanted to bring that up, though, since it has been brought up in the past.
And I don't know that it's, I mean, certainly, I would prefer that if we get a city manager, that he not make his home in Forest Grove, just because if we have a problem here, it might take a while to get back, so, you know. But I think we can make that encouragement without it being codified.
Well, I do, too, and we don't want to limit our scope and limit people, you know, to do it if they have kids in different school systems, and that would require hardship if they, if they're mandated to change, so that's something to keep in mind also.
And to be honest, sometimes I think it's better for the manager to be able to be in a different, to live his life in a different community. You know, it's hard for that person to have to, you know, be seeing people every day at the grocery store and all that other kind of stuff, too.
It is interesting, the charter. He need not be a resident of the city or of the state at the time of his appointment.
Does that imply that...
Of the state?
Well, that's just, it's an interesting sentence.
That is interesting.
And I guess that's to allow out-of-state candidates to apply.
But it says at the time, yeah.
Well, I think it could be read. We are allowed wide latitude in determining what our codes and things mean, and I, you know, I don't have any desire to require that the city manager live inside the city limits. Does anybody else?
No.
Okay, so we can move on from that.
Both of our past city managers have not, right?
Right.
Actually, Larry did. Larry Patterson did live in the city, although he had a residence in Bend, but he lived here.
He was sort of a commuter. Okay. So, if everybody's happy with that, then we can move on from there.
I had no chance to look at this specifically, but one of the things I want to make sure it talks about is creative problem-solving and good negotiation skills and ability to forge collaborative relationships, I mean, specifically the county and the tri-cities and other interest groups, developers, as we move forward in our projects.
City manager needs to be receptive, hearing input and complaints from and on, be open and attentive citizens committed following through on solutions. Manager expected to exercise the highest degree of tact, patience, professional courtesy in context with the public, personnel employed by the city and all elective and appointed officials to maintain the highest possible standards of public service. Manager must have desire and ability to work closely with community groups and organizations, and manager will exhibit leadership and serve as a model for other city employees. Does that cover?
Not necessarily the problem-solving and the innovation.
That's backup in...
There's intergovernmental...
Skills and performance standards.
There is a intergovernmental relations, though, which is further down, which talks about relations with Metro County School District and...
Let's just be clear that this is something that we have to do for the process, that it really, you know, we're going to evaluate all these people as they come in for whatever skill sets they have. So...
This is, look at it as a mechanism to start the recruitment process, where this is, this will be presented to the public, public will have a right to, the opportunity to comment on it, and at that point, after that, then the commission votes to approve, and we move forward with the process.
I'm fine with it.
So, is this coming before us tomorrow?
It might be at 18:00.
Okay.
It wasn't on the agenda since we didn't have time.
Okay.
You could reasonably consider this an emergency, but anyway.
I guess if the commission would like, I mean, usually, we try to post things instead of walk it on.
Well, I think, I think that document covers, you know, I read through it three or four times, and it covers every possible thing that I can think of, and in light of the tight timeframe that we have, the 120 days, I don't see why we couldn't bring it on tomorrow night and get it approved, and we're still going to have plenty of citizen process.
I vote for that.
We're not, we can vote, we're just shaking our heads, yes.
Well, so, this was the same draft as last time?
Pretty much, except for population.
Yeah, so, there's really, there's no major changes.
No substantive changes.
So, I don't see why that would alarm anybody. It's basically the same, so...
Okay, so, you guys can get that on the agenda.
On the consent agenda, or do we need to...
No, let's have it be an item.
Okay.
And if... I guess I just worry walking something on in the morning of, I'd hate to start this off on the wrong foot. I guess if...
Well, I'll explain it, okay?
Understood.
I'll just say, you know, in order to keep the process moving, we're doing this. It's out there in the open. If anybody has any comments, feel free to email any of us or the manager pro tem, and we'll move it on.
Can we have a handout of it for the audience to look at or something, so they can...
Yeah, we can make copies of that.
Yeah, kind of review it and just so it's out there, and if anybody does have any questions or concerns, they can address it.
Certainly. We can, you know, get it, hopefully, get it on the, excuse me, the web, first thing in the morning, or, you know, as soon as, as soon as possible, it's up to kind of Katie and Jamie.
So, this is a resolution, it's not a ordinance, correct?
I have to, I'll find out. I'm not exactly sure how it's, it's a public, it's open for public comment, so I would say that it's a resolution.
Okay. All right, well, and if we have to use the, you know, emergency clause or whatever, go ahead and do that.
And the history, last time, is it was adopted as a resolution, the standard?
I need to find out for sure.
Okay, that would be good to know.
I don't recall.
Okay.
Okay, so, moving down the list, we have the city manager list of candidate characteristics and experience.
There are some minor changes to this from the last time. I added ethical in line two. I also changed, I think, some of the wording from possessed to, you know, it was mostly just grammatical changes more than anything else, and that was, that was the only substantive change.
You know, I hate to be, I hate to limit us to city managers, because I think there's a whole group of executive-level employees out there who haven't got necessarily city management experience, but maybe have large organizational experience that could translate.
And actually, the last time, the job description, job announcement last time did have, leave it open for senior managers, senior staff to apply. It wasn't just open to senior, to city manager. So, this was, this was, actually, I believe, I received a lot of this input from the commission at the time, and I consolidated this and put together as far as what type of characteristics that they were looking for in their next city manager, so...
On the previous, on the previous document, it talks about experience. The position requires at least five years' experience with a successful record of accomplishment in local government or business management, including supervision of employees. Progressive management responsibilities would ideally include positions such as city manager, assistant manager, finance director, public or office director, other department head or equivalent CEO level, municipal experiences preferred, so we...
Then, point one needs to be massaged to reflect that same thing.
Sure.
Or comparable.
Yeah, and actually, this is, this is kind of open for discussion, because this is what was put together last time, so if there's other inputs, I can certainly scratch that out, but, you know, if there was other inputs from the commission on what your ideal, what your ideal candidate looks like, that was the opportunity.
I would think we would want someone that also has strong development expertise, given that we have three major possible developments coming forward, and understanding how the complexities of that.
I think that's an excellent point.
Yes, I think it's really important to look at this in the context of where we are now as a city and what we have going on. I agree.
I guess I would push back a little bit on allowing someone to be a candidate that didn't have at least some level of public sector experience, because it is very different, and private sector does not always translate. The motivations are totally different.
And we can't, obviously, we can't discriminate or prevent someone from applying from the, without, but, you know, those, we know with the understanding that the ones who are most qualified will be the ones who most likely have public sector experience.
And then again, on the other hand, somebody who's coming from the private sector may not have the same biases as far as, well, you can't do something, or, you know, we've always done it this way, that way, that's how we're going to do it, you know? I think some of that experience, you know, brings new ways of doing things and fresh ways of looking at problems.
So, the ideal candidate might have both experiences.
Sure, sure.
And it might not necessarily just be city government experience, it could be county or it could be a special district or, you know...
Could be Google, could be Microsoft, could be a lot of things, yeah.
And one word I don't see in here is cooperation.
Oh.
I don't see that word at all. I see communication skills...
Illustrate trustworthiness and provide mutual respect and cooperation.
Oh, there it is, okay. It is there, good.
Yep.
I was just thinking of being a strong team leader and being able to motivate people and be a really strong leader.
Couple of words I'm not sure I see here is responsiveness and problem-solving abilities. You know, if someone has a complaint, I'd want someone to be responsive to that.
Prove to be accessible and responsive to the public, elected officials, and city staff, fourth from the bottom.
All right. Well, that's good, we're checking. What about collaboration, collaboration in there?
Yeah, it's there.
Is it there, working with senior staff?
Collaboration, cooperation are sort of the same thing, aren't they?
Oh...
Outstanding organizational skills, foster strong team environment, serve as mentor for personal and professional growth.
I think it's very important that they're able to collaborate and work with the executive staff instead of just barking orders, really being able to work with, collaborate, work together.
Foster a strong team environment, serve as a mentor for personal, professional growth, that doesn't cover that.
Okay.
I think it does.
And then there's demonstrate a record of working well with local, regional, state, and federal partners. I think if you got somebody that had all of this stuff, you know, it would be a miracle.
Under the, have an excellent understanding of urban role and economic development, I would add development to that as well, because those are different things.
It comes to that in a different place. Where did it go? Understanding of finance, bring creativity in, finance, project programs, capital expenditures, how, maybe not. Organizational skills. Okay, how would you, how would you word that?
Have an excellent understanding of urban role, the development process, and economic development.
Does that take care of the one to add concerning, understand of the experience with development?
Yeah, that would take care of it.
So, that would accomplish that?
Yeah.
Okay. Actually, I don't think it does. I'm thinking more along lines of have a proven record of managing large-scale municipal projects or building projects or something along those lines. Somebody help me with the words there.
And managing intergovernment partnerships?
No, I'm thinking more along the lines of we're building a library, we're going to build a police station, there's going to be a lot of city involvement with the legacy project, there's going to be a lot of city involvement with, so whatever happens at the Cove and Rosman Tube, so how do we phrase that? Because that isn't in there.
Overseen management of projects and...
Project management experience, large, large scale, although capital, you know, when you talk about capital improvement, that...
I'd say large-scale...
Public?
Public and private projects, something along...
Development projects.
Development projects, there you go.
Mm-hmm. I think that's important.
And this doesn't have to be approved in public meeting, this is just yours, so this is kind of a work in progress, and I'll make those changes and send them out to you.
Okay. All right, so are we done with this?
I think so.
Are you okay?
Yep.
All right. So, where were you going to go now, Carol? You had, there was a, there was something you were looking at? Key questions? Is that in the staff report?
Yes, that is in the staff report. Let's see here. So, the first one, number one.
Renata?
Recruiter.
Recruiter, city staff, executive, I think that we have a very capable city staff that I would trust to do this for us, and I don't see why we need to spend $20,000 or $30,000. We may need to have some additional resources, like he said, to do the background check or some other pieces that either provide the objectivity and third-party review that we feel might be needed, or, but anyway, I would prefer to do it in-house. And if we're, and part of the reason I say that is that I'm not sure we necessarily need to do a full-blown national, international search. Someone from Oregon and Washington is familiar with our land use laws and our processes and our way of doing things here in the Northwest, and if you put it out in the standard websites where people are looking, I think we'll get a strong candidate pool.
What are your thoughts, Jim, on that, if, than my staff?
The responsible staff? No, I'm kidding. So...
They're all looking at you.
Somebody marked that on the calendar.
Somebody's behind you.
Right now, actually, is probably good. I'm not in bargaining, we start bargaining next year, so the timing on this is probably okay, and I think I... So the, the timing on this is, is probably okay. And I, I think I have the capacity to do this. You know, last, last time it was, you know, it was pretty much a team effort because we had all the department heads also involved in doing tours and, and, you know, helping, the recruiter's office was very helpful in arranging a lot of the meet and greets that we did. So it was, it was pretty much a team effort. But as far as starting out the process, I'm comfortable being able to do that.
Don't feel like there's any pressure, because, I mean, we, we could, we could do it the other way, too. We just wanna make sure you're comfortable with it, so.
And recruiting is, is, the first part is not difficult. It's just, we put it out on our website and, and, you know, to Commissioner Mengelberg's. Unfortunately, our online recruiting tool that we use is pretty much national. Once you put it out there, everybody's out there. Now, we can always, we can always say that it's, you know, we prefer candidates from the area, but we can't necessarily limit to that, so. So, you know, we'll get, and, and that'll also be a decision, too, when we screen candidates. If we get, for some reason, we get a really good candidate from the Midwest, that becomes a question on whether or not, you know, for, whether we do a Skype interview, or fly him back, or eventually fly him back. So those are, those are questions downstream from here that we can talk about.
But we could put in our criteria if we're looking for somebody who's regionally, you know, in this region that has.
We can, we can say it's a, it's a preference.
Right.
You know, because the, the standards and criteria is actually the minimum qualifications for the position, so, and we can't discriminate from that. So we, but we can certainly add preferences. You know, we can add a preference for this, a preference for that.
Because we are a unique little corner of the nation.
Especially around land use. You know, someone from Oklahoma just wouldn't understand.
It's, you know, land use and urban renewal were the two areas the last time that folks were, yeah.
Lambeau Falls project, too. I mean, some of our projects are very specific to, to working with entities in the state.
Were there a preference, or leave it open for now?
No, I think, I think if we're gonna do it, I don't wanna spend, you know, thirty thousand dollars. If we, if we can do it through Jim, let's do it through Jim.
Yeah, if he's comfortable with it, I'm fine with that, too.
I, I.
He'll be comfortable with it. That's what you tell him to do.
There we go.
There's many reasons why I prefer it. One, I mean, there is the money savings. But two, I think that we can have, I think you have a better sense of the process and what the city really needs. I think we'll have a better handle on it. And like last time, the background checks weren't done as thorough as they should have been done. And I think we can use that savings to make sure that the background checks are thorough and that we really do a diligent job. And I feel that we'll have more control over the process besides saving money. So I appreciate you being willing to take it on.
Not a problem. And, and, you know, honestly, even with a, with an outside recruiter, I would be involved heavily with the recruiter, doing a lot of, doing a lot of their work for them. So they, they would be out there, you know, shaking the trees for candidates, but, and doing, possibly doing some of the screening and, and just providing you a final list of candidates. But there's nothing that really is earth-shattering that I can't do.
If you, you did the last one. Have you done this previous to that, too, Jim, or is that?
I had done a lot of recruiting in my, in my previous jobs, but I had not done a city manager before this.
Okay.
This is my first city manager.
Okay. Well, I think you have a clear idea of where we wanna go. So on to three, budget for recruitment interviewing. I'm gonna take relocation off of that bullet because the relocation is really going to be a matter of negotiation with the candidate once we get there. So I think we just wanna talk about how much we think we want to or need to spend for the process. Jim, do you have some ideas there?
A lot of it, a lot of the expense last time was, there was some travel for the, for the candidates per diem. We, we put them up in the place over in Gladstone. What is that, the?
Hampton Inn Inn, or whatever it is.
It's a Holiday Inn Express.
Anyway, that's, and we kept them local. They were, they were all, and there was some rental car expenses. So overall, we spent, and then with the, with the food and the meet and greets, but we can, I think we can economize some of those meet and greets so that they're not, you know, we don't have quite as many, you know, maybe one big meet and greet and then, and then a dinner with the commission. That's, that is, that was recommended actually by the former city manager. And, and again, that's open for discussion, too. But I, I heard that that was well-received by both the commission and the candidates to have that informal meeting, dinner. So, and then the expense on that wasn't, wasn't that bad. But we're looking probably on the, on the order of about ten to fifteen, I would think, ten to fifteen thousand.
Okay. And we have plenty of room in the budget for this, right?
Yes, we will. Have those funds available.
Okay. Okay. So we're down to process to review and select finalists.
I would say that I would trust Jim to do the first screening, but provide the commissioners an opportunity, should they so choose, to go through and look at the applications.
You can, sure. And I guess the question is also if you wanna see, you know, if, how I did it last time was to blind copy the, the applications. That, that's an option. We, the other benefit from our online recruiting thing is, system is, we didn't have that last time. This time we do. And I, so I can download all the PDFs, all the applications and resumes and, and any other items that are attached to the application as one PDF. So I could just send that out and get the opportunity to review it, or I can print them hard copy, whatever you prefer.
And what if somebody were to request that as a public record?
During the, during the process itself, it's not a public record because it's, you know, we, we are involved in the recruiting and selection process.
Okay.
And, and also, as we, we can put that in the job announcement, if we typically do that. We do not name the list of candidates really up until just, just prior to the, the interview process. So that protects the candidates as well, their, their privacy. In case they're, you know, they, most, most of the time, they should be letting their folks know that they're looking for a job.
Right. So I don't wanna see, and this is just me, but I don't wanna see fifty-five applications.
That was a lot.
Well, so that's what I was gonna ask is.
A lot of work.
We don't wanna see all of those, but we just opened it up, you know, when we said we're, was the previous one just asking for a city manager's position?
Yes. So it was a city manager.
And now we've opened it up to say city managers plus.
Oh, no. No, no, actually.
Which could give us.
No, I don't think so.
No, no, it's just the experience level, but the experience level prior said, or like experience. It did have that in there, too.
Before?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what I was worried about, because I didn't know if the previous one just said city manager and you got fifty-five. You know, how many went again? Now we've kind of opened up the window there a little bit, so. Okay, that's fine, yeah. I just wanna know if you wanna go through some of these, because I agree, I don't wanna get fifty-five of these things.
What, what number are people comfortable with?
Twenty.
Ten.
I'm with you.
Top ten.
Yeah, I think ten. I mean, we narrowed it down from the four, that's, oh, I guess we went down to five, but we had stuff in there.
It was actually pretty interesting that the commission, you know, even with the blind copies, they were all, right, they were all, they were all, you know, within each other, one, two, three, four, five. So they weren't all necessarily ranked the same.
Well, yeah, as a person that hired hundreds of people, there are always ones that you can just put in a pile, no, 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 no. And you usually, I think we'll be lucky to get ten that actually have qualifications and that are worth looking to more lucky.
So my question would be, let's say ten is the initial cut number. That would mean Jim would scan and get us the top ten, that best qualify, and then we as a team would look at those and maybe narrow it down to five or something.
Yeah. I'd prefer three.
Three.
Depends on the ten.
It, it, I think it does depend.
I mean, it does. It might depend on that. I mean, we don't know how close they are. We don't, so I don't know if that, we wanna make that judgment yet, but.
Or you could do a two-step process where you interview the top five via Skype, narrow it down to two or three and have those final.
Well, see, because I wanna do, I'm not taking any chances. If we have to do this, because I think you all know how I feel about this. So if we're gonna have to do this, when we get to that point, we're gonna do an in-depth background check. So I don't wanna do an in-depth background check on five people. So I'd like to get us to three, and then we're gonna have to take a couple, three weeks and let our people go out there and do that stuff. And I think that includes one of us going to each of these locations and just spending the day walking around town, talking to people, not letting them know who we are, to, you know, to get the skinny. Because when you're talking to somebody over the phone, you go, I'm interviewing for a city man, you know, I'm checking up on your guy 'cause he's interviewing for our city, you know, a lot of times they, people won't tell you things.
Well, right. And that was my concern with the outside firm doing it, is it might be like that. We can really make sure that the due diligence is done so that we're very sure about this.
And actually, that wasn't done last time. That was in the initial recommendation that, for some reason, I had three, I thought it was two commissioners, go out to onsite and look and interview the folks that, that this person works with, both, you know, above and below. And that didn't happen for, for whatever reason, but that, so that would add to the expense a little bit.
I'd like to go back for a second, because I think we skipped an important discussion. I wanna make sure that this is an open recruitment that also encourages any city staff that feels like they might like to apply to be very encouraged to apply. And we wouldn't want the qualifications to say city manager experience only, and then discount the opportunity for folks to have some internal advancement opportunity.
Understand. And that's why it is, the experience is, is written that it allows for that. Any, any senior level, public sector, department head equivalent or CEO level experience. So it's, it's pretty clear.
Okay.
So I guess what I heard, I guess what I heard was if we get fifty, then.
Jim whittles it down to ten.
Jim's gonna whittle it down to ten. But did you still wanna see all fifty?
I, I don't, but, you know, but if you provide, if, if someone feels uncomfortable about the ten, you know, it's easy enough if they wanna come into Jim's office and look at stuff and say, well, maybe this one, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess the question is, though, what happens if that does happen? If, if one person comes in and says, what about this one? How do we handle that?
I, you know what, I'm not gonna, I.
You're not too worried about that?
Let's cross that bridge if we get to it. I, I think the five of us up here are all pretty much, generally speaking, on the same page. And I think if we get ten good candidates, which I'm pretty sure we are, given the, the strength of the things that we have going on in Oregon City.
And the openings that are out there.
The hard part is, for us, is gonna be getting it down to three, not worrying about number eleven or number twenty-one.
So the agreement is, the goal is to get it to ten to three.
Yep.
So we get, we get the ten from staff, they send it to the commission, you do your evaluation, we meet, figure out the top three.
Then we turn it over to Aiken and those guys and let them do, you know, what they do. And at the same time, we'll send either one or two of us to wherever they're from, unless they're from here. And then I don't know that we need to really do much.
Hopefully, they're from, like, Hawaii or something.
So one second. Are we, are we interviewing?
Well, the thing is, I'm going.
Yeah, I know.
So are we narrowing it down to three, interviewing the three and then doing a background check, or are we doing a background check first before we even interview?
Do the background check before the interview. Because if we discover something in the background check, I don't wanna waste time flying somebody here and doing all that when we find out on paper. Best thing since, you know, sliced bread. But when you get down and get into the nitty-gritty, it's somebody that we don't want. And, and the kinds of people that we're gonna send out to do that investigation are gonna know how to do that. They're gonna know how to find out that stuff.
Yeah, that's really part of the screening process, I think, is that background check. And then seeing if you.
But what level? Are we, like, doing a criminal background check, a credit check and a credentials check for the first shot? And then if we narrow it down to the top guy, then we.
No, we're gonna do this, at least in my opinion, we would do a extremely high-level background check like you would do for someone who is getting a, a top-secret security clearance. So these guys are gonna go out and they're gonna interview, you know, people that they've worked for in the past, neighbors, friends, the whole deal, to make sure that the guy that we're getting doesn't have something bad.
You're gonna scare people away.
I don't think so.
Well, I bounced that check a while back.
You don't think so?
If they're.
If they're scared.
If they're scared away by a background check, then we don't want them anywhere.
That's right.
And actually, to address Commissioner Mengelberg's question, that, that is a good point, whether or not we want to, we have not typically done credit checks in the past. And if we do a credit, I need to write that into the job announcement that if we do credit checks or not. The, the problem is, it's, the, the position does have a fiduciary responsibility, but whether or not it's, I don't, I don't think we could justify doing a, a credit check for a city manager. For a finance position, yes, but because, you know, the city manager can't necessarily embezzle funds. That's something more that a finance person can. Why it's not here, but, you know, that's a, that's something more that a finance.
It's legal to do, it's legal for a private employer to do a credit check for anybody who they hire.
Well, as long as it's in the job announcement that it's, but then, you know, the Oregon law is such that it, and it probably wouldn't be challenged, but if it's, if there's some fiduciary responsibility associated with it, that's why you would have a credit check in, in the city manager thing, so it's.
Well, at the end of the day, he is the fiduciary.
Or she.
So.
I will, I will have to just double-check with our attorney on that, only because, you know, the Oregon law is such.
I, I think it'd be worth checking because that would give us a clue maybe to the overall responsibility, spread responsibility level, so maybe.
And actually, the law wasn't in place in two thousand and ten when we did our last recruitment, so that's, that's a relatively recent law.
Well, the, the candidates will obviously know that there's gonna be this extent of the credit check, too, when they apply. So they may not, they may not apply, so.
In the application process, they sign off on a background check, don't they, Jim?
They, when they're called in for an interview is, is usually when we have asked for the, for the background, for their, just, for them to give access for a background check.
So once we get this down to the top three, then you send out an email with a form that says, you know, you made it into the top three and we're gonna do background checks now, and they sign off on everything.
Full release is what we ask for.
Right.
We haven't, well, that, that would be up to the background person. Tony asked the question of what personnel records. We would not receive their individual personnel records, but that, the background investigator may request that. And that'd be something in the conversation we have with the, with the background investigator, what, what exactly to look for, but do they, they know what to look for.
But do we need that in the release?
Oh, probably, yeah. I'll, I'll work with our attorney to craft the, the release for it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the, that's the timing of that. Then we have, then the process as far as selecting the final one out of the finalists. So in my opinion, I think we need to have probably two afternoon slash evening functions. One for the business community at large, and then one for just the public. So the OCBA and the chamber together could host an event to, you know, for each of these guys to be able to talk for a few minutes. And then they can ask questions. I don't know how that, you know, how that might work, but, you know, certainly those guys can get around to doing that. And then the city could host one at, at the senior center or wherever and just say, you know, same kinda deal. They each get five minutes to talk about them. or wherever and just say, you know, same kind of deal. They each get five minutes to talk about themselves, and then people can just feel free to ask questions.
That's, that's similar to how we did it. We had, although we had a few more, we had a lunch meet and greet at the Tumwater Room at the museum. We had a staff meet and greet at the Carnegie, when the Carnegie was, was not the library. It was vacant at that point. Then we had another forum. Well, we, we had a morning meet and greet at the Pioneer Center. And then we had another candidate forum. This was, that was an addition, evening forum with the CIC, the Chamber of Main Street. And that was in the commission chambers. And then they did the dinner over at the.
I think we get rid of the, the daytime meet and greet, and instead we change that to senior and mid-level staff, and do it here.
So Kami just went through this about a year ago, and there was one meet and greet in the evening that everybody was invited to attend. And then in addition, there were three kind of stakeholder panel interviews. One was with staff, one was with the commission, and one was with business and community stakeholders. And there were prepared questions and scoring and all that, and then the public meet and greet, and they gathered input from all of those pieces that was presented to the commission to make a decision.
So there was one public meet and greet?
One. And it was well-attended and went wonderfully.
Well, but at the same time, what I was saying is, was basically the same thing, is it's just the, you know, community leaders and stakeholders, I, I call that generally the business community, and that would also obviously include, you know, folks from the school district and the, you know, whatever other organizations there might be that would want to, you know, have, have some input. I'm not, I'm not really a big fan of, of those folks, like, formally scoring candidates, because at the end of the day, it's really our responsibility. So, you know, I think that we all have enough connection inside the community that once those people have those things to say, that, that, that those groups will let us know in one way or another where they feel like those candidates are. Do you guys want those groups to have some kind of ability to formally score the candidates?
Yeah.
No, but, yeah, it's either that or they'll let us know by, you know, and we'll tell them that. You know, let your commissioners know what your thoughts are.
Each group before made a recommendation of their, I can't remember how it was done. It wasn't done really in scoring. It was, it was done by telling us their top choice, I think, or just.
What we had, and for the, at the meet and greets, we had, well, actually, we did this with the finance director and the, and the economic development director, manager recruitment. We, at the meeting greets there, we handed out cards.
That's right. That's what you did away at.
And, and so that was, the cards came back to, to me, and they had the different comments on the different candidates. What we, with the city manager recruitment, if I remember right, since we had the department head conversation, they, they ranked that. We had the ASME candidate forum, they ranked that, the OCBA candidate forum. And then, or what else was there? And then, I guess the, and then there was the, the interviews, the commission interviews. So they had those three groups, and then the interviews. So those, and so each of those groups. So we didn't have a, we didn't have an interview per se, or a ranking from the, we didn't have a ranking from the outside stakeholders. So that was, that was a departure.
I, I think the main thing is to provide an opportunity for people to give input, whether it's just the general community, the business community, and I think those comment cards are, are good. Even if there is, like, specific questions, you know, that, that you answer on those. And I think those would, those would be helpful to you.
Yeah.
I think you just, you know, so we're going to have three of them. You say, rank the candidates 1, 2, 3. And if you have other comments, you know, put it on the back or whatever, and then you turn the card in as you're going out the door, and then, you know, those can be tabulated, and, you know, that's sort of a, obviously, that doesn't, it doesn't count for anything more than just getting an idea about where those groups are at.
Right.
But there's.
An individual citizen.
So there's very little that you can glean about a person in a meet and greet. I mean, you can get a general impression. Whereas if you have an interview that has specific questions that everybody hears and puts through their filter, you have a lot more substance to be able to make an informed decision on. That's why I'd be more in favor of having three or so interview panels. We'll make the final decision, but we're getting better input. And our stakeholders really feel like they've had a seat at the table and had a chance to weigh in.
And how many people would be on one of those interview panels?
Eight or 10.
Is there another possibility of kind of doing something in the middle as far as having a meet and greet, but an opportunity to interface and ask questions, like, more informally?
The thing I worry about with something like that is that we have such a broad and diverse section of folks who are interested that we start picking interview panels, invariably, there's going to be somebody that's going to complain that they got left out of the process.
That's fine.
Well, okay, so.
If you complain, I mean, we set the process, right?
Well, I know. Now you're sounding like me.
The, the model that I'm thinking of is not too unlike candidates when candidates are running, where you have a moderator who is seeing the questions and screening them a little bit, so they don't get any offensive questions.
Or repeats.
Or repeats. And then they, they ask the candidates these questions. That way, people have a chance to, the questions that they like to ask, they can actually have those answered. And it's, it is important that we make sure that we do get input and we provide the opportunity. It is the goal. And I think that might be a middle ground to do. Instead of a formal panel, do something like that with a moderator. Maybe have the chamber do it, or somebody, some other organization be the moderator for something like that. So to have it structured.
What's our timeframe again here?
Oh, we've got, you know, this, this, this particular piece of this doesn't have to get pounded out tonight. You know, we're, we're probably six, eight, 10 weeks down the road from having to make, you know, final preparation for this decision. So let's, let's let this all, this piece of it rattle around in our heads for a couple of weeks, and we can talk about it again and see if we can come to something that, you know. We realize, how, how long were these guys here the last time? Couple days?
Couple days.
It was three days.
Three days.
So, you know.
Yeah, it was long, three days.
Yeah.
Part of that, you're going to want to be able to give them a chance to see the city and see what it's like and see if it actually fits them, too. So, you know, we can't be tying these guys up, you know, eight hours a day for three days. At the same time, we want them to get, but I think for me, the key component of this, for me, is that there has to be a chance for senior and mid-level staff to interview these guys and individually for an hour or whatever it takes, and then be able to do the same kind of thing, a, a ranking of those candidates, because that's going to be very important input for me.
Yeah.
I don't think, uh, I'm just not going to say that. Never mind.
So let me, let me clarify. So we were talking about senior mid-level staff interview panel, and as.
Not an interview panel.
Not an interview panel, just a.
No, I'm talking about a meeting of all the senior staff and all of their mid-level managers in the room. Because this guy's going to have to work with everybody, and he's going to need to be a team player, and he's going to need to collaborate and do all those other things. And of, of anybody that's in this process, those people are going to be the people that I'm going to want to key on as far as can they work with this person or not.
And how it should be a fit.
And also as far as, you know, so one meet and greet, business, public, chamber, school district, et cetera, and then one meet and greet, is that, is that what the commission ordered?
Well, I think, we're, we're, let's just call it one general public, one business and community stakeholders, and we'll determine what that looks like as we go along with it.
And with staff.
Whether it's a formal interview panel, whether it's a hybrid of something else, you know, whatever we can all get to to feel comfortable with. Okay? And then, then the staff. Okay, polite con, key stakeholder component, we got that done. We've already done the ideal candidate profile, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Salary.
Okay, well, here's one. And Akin will just chew me for this, but I always take these kinds of things as an opportunity to reset. If we look at the, if we look at the silly city manager salary survey, and.
$166,000 still puts us at third or fourth.
We're, we're at 190, almost $197,000, which is, you know, I mean, comparable with Hillsborough, but Hillsborough's got almost three times the population. You know, the places that are comparable to us in that 35,000, 39,000 range, Grants Pass is at 141. Where else? Where was Happy Valley at? Is Happy Valley on the list?
No, it's not.
It's not here.
Lake Oswego's at, well, 174, but it's Lake Oswego.
I think, I, I will say that one of the reasons that was a discussion is because of the level of the projects that we are doing and the massive amount of things that we have on our plate in the city. And I'm, and that may be too high, maybe it is, but that there's a reason it's on the higher end.
I understand, but at the same time.
I think Gresham is paying 166, and they're like more than three times bigger than us.
Right.
I, I was surprised to see how high they all were for all the cities.
And I agree.
You've got to thought about that.
And that's a, that's a discussion for another time and place.
Yes, it is.
But I think we should set, in, in my opinion, I think we should set a range of between 160 and 180. And anybody who tells me that we can't get somebody qualified between 160 and 180, then I just don't believe them. There's plenty of people out there that will be willing to come to work for us that will be qualified in that range.
You think 160 for the salaried in, or for total?
I'm saying, I'm saying 160, the salary range would be 160,000 to 180,000, depending on qualifications.
So I'm looking at the total here, which is a fair bit higher than the salary. So.
Well, that is, that is the total. That's what we're talking about, is the total.
Okay, that's where I was going, because the sal, you're saying the total and not the salary.
No, I, I do think it's important to bring up, I did ask Jim the question about the salary, and he mentioned that it's typically 15% higher than the highest-paid department head. And he gave me the number, the figure of the highest-paid department head.
I just don't care.
Well.
Honestly, I don't.
So is that in H, is that in HR policy?
No, it's not a policy. That's just, that's, that's pretty much what the, the standard is, that it will be only because you don't want your department head making more than your city manager.
Which is, which is how these numbers got to where they are.
So, so we don't have to follow that? That's just the way it's been done before?
That's correct.
Okay.
As Mayor Holiday said, time for reset.
In the, in the, what you're going to put in the document, is that total compensation, or are you just talking salary?
It's a salary, because everything, for a city manager, since they're at-will position, everything else really is negotiable. Bearing in mind that.
Well, then I think, then if that's the case, I think we should go, you know.
140 to.
Yeah.
160.
Because the city manager has more add-ons than other executive staff.
If they negotiate it.
Right.
If they negotiate.
And in the past, it's typically been that way. So if you looked at the total, it's much higher than 15%.
I mean, if you're in 140 to 160, you're still, you're right in that median. The average is 158, and the median is 158, I mean, 70, so between the average and the median, there's only like $60 difference.
So if you went 140 to 165, you've got a little bit of headroom above the median.
Well, and that doesn't, and the range doesn't preclude us from going more if the negotiation calls for it.
That's correct. That's just a suggested range.
It's, it's what's advertised, because last time in 2010, it was advertised at 125 to 140. So it's considerably grown since then.
Right.
And I, I think we, we hired him at 144, if I remember correctly. So it may have been above that.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable there?
What did we say, 140 to 165?
All right.
Just revisit real quick. I'm not sure if I missed, on number two, where to emphasize candidate search area. Commissioner Mengeleberg brought up kind of Oregon, Washington, North.
Oregon, Washington, just because our land use policy is so different than the rest of the world.
I wasn't sure if there was consensus on that, or if.
There, there is, for me, regional. It should be within our region.
As a preference. It's not, it's not required.
Yeah, I got the, personally, I think once we put it out there, it's, it's not really going to matter. I mean, so, and the other part of that is, while the city manager, you know, needs to have basic understanding of land use law, the reality is, is that our attorney and the planning commission and the pub, the, the development director really have more responsibility over that area than the manager does.
That's true.
Something else also for the.
We don't make decisions here.
Yeah.
What was the?
Read our lips.
I don't have a problem with saying that we have a preference for, for the Northwest region, but at the same time, I'm not holding out a preference as far as where they're coming from.
I mean, we wouldn't throw anyone's application away if they didn't come from the Pacific Northwest, but if we're faced with 60 candidates and the top 10 are in the Pacific Northwest, I mean, we would probably gravitate toward them.
So I think preference is the key word.
And to follow on with that, as far as where we want to recruit, we understand that when we put it online, it's, it goes online, but there are other options, whether we put it on Oregon Live, not, I think that would be a waste of money, or the LOC website, the ICMA website. Those are, those are options also. Of course, ICMA is.
I'm not a huge fan of the ICMA.
So those are, those are things also to consider in, as far as what we do. But, you know, to open up the job, we can, we can open it up relatively quickly. The other thing, as far as the job announcement goes, it would be helpful if, if the commission would, would consider and provide what, you know, the key bullet points, opportunities and challenges, like two or three opportunities, two or three challenges that the, the commission as a whole sees is, you know, in the next three to five years.
Two or three?
If you've got more.
Yeah, it's pretty hard to get it down to two or three.
Well, we've only got so much space on the job announcement, Mayor. So, yeah, if we, you know, those are, those are the type of things that we need to add to the, to the job announcement itself.
So we said salary, but we didn't talk about the compensation package. What are we going to say about the compensation package?
It's boilerplate, it's that it's, we offer competitive, you know, our health benefits are pretty standard. Those aren't negotiable. The VIBA, say again?
PERS pickup.
Yeah, the PERS pickup, the 6% PERS pickup is, is standard. All employees get that. The VIBA, all management employees get that. The other add-ons that are negotiable would be like a car allowance, the electronic stipend, the vacation accrual amount, you know, front-loading, if, if the individual. stipend, you know, the vacation accrual amount, you know, front loading, if, if the individual is coming, they need front loading vacation and sick. Those are, those are the other typical, deferred compensation is a, those are, those are negotiable items.
So just a question, what is the city's policy on banking vacation?
Managers can, managers are allowed to accrue vacation up to three hundred and sixty hours.
Which is how many weeks?
Um, was it about?
Eight.
Nine hundred and sixty divided by eight hours is forty days, divided by five, that's eight weeks.
Eight weeks. Thank you, Tony. My razor-sharp mind didn't get that.
What about, what about to be below senior staff?
Um, we, well, we start, we start accruing, at entry level, management employees accrue at ten hours a month.
No, no, I'm not, I'm talking about rank at five.
You mean, represented staff, you know, bargaining unit employees?
Yeah.
They can accrue up to two hundred and forty hours by contract.
So that's six weeks. Then what happens?
They lose, they don't accrue it anymore. Same with management employees, they don't accrue it anymore.
Well, I think as a commission, we need to, we need to have a discussion about that at some other time. Because one, to get to the place of banking as many hours as our last manager had in vacation time, I think people need to take vacations to recharge and to be the best they can be. And if we have a policy that allows somebody to go two or three years without taking a vacation, I think it's the wrong way to go about these things, but that's not a subject for discussion tonight, so I just, I throw that out there for a policy discussion for later. Obviously, we can't talk about the bargains employees, you know. I'm not, I'm not willing to pick that fight, I don't think, but we'll see.
So I pointed out the, the announcement prior that was used in 2010. I don't see that listed as a document on our screen, but it's very helpful and it, it lists challenges and opportunities, it talks about finances. Some of these have changed, some of these haven't. Urban renewal, facilities, staffing and growth. So I don't know if the commission wanted to look at the prior and if we all have that printed out or see if we're missing anything or make copies of it. Or I have, I have it right here, if you wanna.
Oh.
Do you think that would be helpful?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I think we are done with that piece of the general business. I had.
Wait, I thought we were gonna talk about this.
What?
Are we, are we gonna talk about this now or are we gonna do it later and get back to Jim?
Do we need that for tomorrow?
I will, not for tomorrow. The only thing we need for tomorrow is the policy and, and standards and policy and.
Why don't you, let's do this, let's have them put that up to us, you know, in a Word document so that we can, we can track, we can track changes and then, you know, send it back to Jim if anybody wants to make changes or additions, extractions or whatever. Does that work?
Yeah, because we should probably have a timeline for when the job, job announcement goes out and we'll need to make the changes or look at that before.
I'm getting the impression from folks that they, we'd rather get this done sooner than later, so, you know, let's try to get that, whatever that is done by the end of the week.
Okay.
So that, you know, they can have that to go ahead and go out when it's done.
I can, I can either get it out Friday or first thing Monday morning.
Okay.
Okay, well, then having the copies would be helpful.
Yeah.
So we can just make the marks and try to bring our input tomorrow or as soon as possible.
Okay. So the last thing on our meeting tonight is the executive team evaluation process. And let me give you a quick, basic update on why we're talking about this. How many do I?
Interesting.
The executive team was due to be evaluated soon. And given the fact that the manager is not here, the manager pro temp is a senior staffer at this point, there was some question about how we were gonna do, you know, these interviews and evaluations. I had a conversation with Aiken Blitz, our labor attorney, and his recommendation is that we follow the same basic process, which is the senior staff do a self-evaluation form and then that would be taken by the city manager, evaluated, and then there would be a recommended, the same kinda thing that we did for the city manager. I think the former city manager requested Wyatt to let him know whether he could do, whether he had room to do a five percent bonus for each of the senior staff. So that A leads me to believe that that was what was going to happen. So what Aiken recommended is that we follow that process up to the point of those people would be evaluated by Mr. Lefler as the human resources director, and he would bring forth the recommendation to us as far as, you know, the bonusing might occur. And then because of the strange circumstance that Mr. Conklin finds himself in, he would do his self-evaluation, give it to the commission, and we would do the evaluation for Mr. Conklin. That keeps him out of the loop as far as anybody suggesting that he was playing favors because these guys are his friends or, you know, close colleagues or anything like that. Mr. Lefler is a, a senior human resources director, has long time experience, I don't think anybody can question his motives about how he might, you know, operate those evaluations.
I think that sounds solid.
Just, just to clarify, would Mr., would the commission be doing Mr. Lefler's or?
Who would the mine?
Oh, that's right, sorry, I had it the other way around. So we would do Mr. Lefler's evaluation, not Mr. Conklin's.
So who's doing Mr. Conklin's?
Well, would be, would be Mr. Lefler because he's, he's evaluating Tony as the public, as the development director, not as the city manager pro temp.
I see.
Because this is about the performance of the last year and while Mr. Conklin's been pro temp for six or eight weeks, the, the bulk of his valuation based on is running the development department, not as a city manager. So then we're, we're evaluating Mr. Lefler, that takes Mr. Lefler's thing out of the loop as far as that. So I had that backwards, I apologize. Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Conklin.
And also just to, to clarify a little, Mayor, it's not a bonus, it's actually a merit payment for performance is, is how it's termed.
Okay. Tomato, tomato.
I guess this is a, you know, a, a decision for the commission to cons, you know, or not, we wanted to bring this forward 'cause initially, you know, per the charter, the only thing that the pro temp city manager cannot do is fire somebody without the support of three commissioners. All the other duties are my, my responsibility with what you've given me. But I do recognize that this is a peculiar situation in that, you know, I would potentially be applying for this position of city manager. So I think this is, this is workable, you know, or the alternative, I think we identified three. The least optimum option would be to have everyone wait. I don't think executive staff should be penalized for the actions of the situation that we're in right now, they didn't create it, so I don't think that's equitable.
Well, I think that, I think that's the point that I was getting to is that, you know, if we wait to hire a city manager, then the city manager's still gonna have to have at least a year to, to do any evaluations of anybody. So I personally think this is the cleanest way, was there, what was the other option?
Oh, and the other one was, you know, the status quo, which is, you know, I do that and then you, the commission, do mine. But like I said, I do appreciate potential appearances of conflict of interest, though I don't believe that they exist in any way, but.
Well, it might be awkward if there are other internal candidates applying for the position.
Right.
That is true.
So is everybody happy with that plan?
I am.
Yes. Okay. All right. Then, anything from the manager?
I think two things I'd just like to bring up tonight. We're doing preparation, so as you recall, this is the middle year of, coming up in January of the biennium budget. And so this would not be a full-blown retreat as we would do when we do our goal setting and budget updates. This would be an update on where we're at to date on the goals that we adopted for this biennium. So in doing that, we, we, you know, when we did this last time, it was, it was a smaller event in terms of the time that it took. It was more of an update on, from the department heads on where we're at on the goals that they're responsible for, as well as other information that they wanted to pass along about their departments or accomplishments. We're imagining three hours, and so I think the question was, and it does not answer, yeah, it have to be answered tonight, we're just putting it out there and we can follow this up with an email for calendaring, is this something you'd like to see on a, on a weekday night? I, I don't know that we would wanna give up a work session night necessarily. I think it should be a, a time when we can dedicate three hours to.
When are we talking about doing this?
Uh, January.
January.
Or a weekend, you know, morning or afternoon. I think, you know, I think this is something for you to think about, we can follow that up to, to get down to date, but we're looking for your preference on how you would like to meet to, to go through that process.
Either's fine.
Three, three hours is gonna turn into four. So my preference, I think, would be like a Saturday morning or a Saturday afternoon.
Yeah, I think the retreat thing worked pretty well, you know, and it was off-site and everything, and I don't have a problem with that, so.
You know, I don't mean, I don't know that we need to go, you know, drive to Estacada to do it.
With the request to keep it off-site but in Oregon City.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we could use that, well, of course, that may screw up the Saturday, but you know, Fowler's got the basement of the chapel's plenty big enough to do that. There's the room above the High Cliff, there's two or three other places that are big enough for us to be able to, to get everybody together.
So I guess is, is there kind of a consensus for, for a weekend just because of the, the time?
Does that create a lot of overtime and additional expense on the part of staff?
Those guys are all salary.
We're all salary. There is no overtime.
'Cause I like the idea of a, a weekend because if it's gonna be four hours, it's better to be fresh, to be able to focus on it, because at the end of the day, four hours would be.
Yeah, no, I agree. That's why, that's, that's kinda what I was thinking about.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll go ahead and start working on that as well. I think the other, just second update is just more of a personal one. You know, I, I think, you know, I appreciate the opportunity that the commission has entrusted with me and as pro temp city manager. I, I will be applying for the position. With that being said, to avoid any conflict of interest or whatnot, I would not be participating or being able to assist in, with you in this process. I think that the experience that I bring with knowledge of other staff and the projects that are going on here are of value, but with that, I would essentially fire my, myself off. And so I would request that, you know, I turn this over to the HR director to be your, your contact as we move through this process.
Sure.
Okay. With that, that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else have any thing?